We're building one.
We're using a board out.
How are you?
Good, sir. How are you?
Good. I'll take you for the temporary. I was like, here's the photo.
We don't like.
I have my brain there.
What do you want?
My mind is not in focus.
You're not in your brain.
I saw it yesterday. Thank you. How many of us did you see?
Well, I think that's I'm gonna run out of here.
You saw it with me. Yeah, I get it. Thank you. Oh, appreciate it.
No worries. I'll make the paper. We wrote it down.
Good. I wish to those bylaws.
I'm on. Morning, John.
I think this is my chair.
Oh, after the carpeting, you think they might've.
Yeah. Because I like can't get these lower. Mine, see this one? So when RB sits on it, he's okay. I want this. Okay.
There, my feet are touching the ground now. On that one, I was like, ooh. Okay.
So for February, we have an alcohol permit coming up or licensee, whatever they call it. I've already let the paper know it's already advertised. And we're probably like at 50-ish days instead of the 45. So I'll let them know later that we're gonna be a little late.
Okay.
And then they tell you, you can let us know, but we're not really giving you permission.
Right.
So.
They'll do it with or without you.
Yeah. What happened to it? Oh. Is it missing? Are they all like that?
Oh. Oh. Are they all like that? I think it was just not.
Oh, okay. Okay, good. I wonder why she. Because she took it from who wanted it, is what she did.
Yeah.
Let me have one so I can show it to her. Let me have a agenda, please, so I can show it to Jen.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You want scrap and wrap. One of these, the regulars?
The regular ones, yeah. That's quirky. We can just say we gave you no pages. Yeah. That's great. Thank you.
We're gonna leave the other ones there like that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's just gonna be more waste of paper if I have a redo, you know? So we'll just say, we gave you guys no pages.
They'll go look at that and say, oh, looks like it's gonna be a short made.
Right.
A low-risk opportunity for people to try and be entrepreneurs. So they focus on education. Doing all right? Some stuff in the chamber. I wanted to talk to you about it. So. But you. Get in between.
Well, you get to figure out where he's at. So when he talks, do you wanna bring him up from his certified, right?
Yeah.
And roll that right into that? Or do you wanna let him sit here while I'm torturing him a bit?
Okay, I don't know.
Because he's this one. And he's gonna talk here. I don't know why he's doing.
There's the executive committee or whatever. They know everything. I've been involved some to that maybe because of my legal background and because I kind of.
That's what I would think. If it is, he can just work the hands. But if he does get up and talk. We'll see what happens.
Yeah. I mean, I was concerned about like the most important thing being is relationships and maintaining them. And I often. Okay.
All right. Well, I'll call you in a second.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I agree on that.
I don't know if you wanna move so they don't have to sit here through the whole thing. Just hopefully get the approval of the plat. If you want.
You could.
She's on.
She's on?
Yep. Amy.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
We can hear ya.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, December 19th, 2024 County Commission meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Markward.
Here.
Commissioner Matherley.
Here.
Commissioner Barrella.
Here.
And if y'all please stand, we'll say invocation. Since this is a Christmas season, I thought we'd do a Christmas prayer. Heavenly Father, we pray for peace in every nation this Christmas. Let the message of Christ birth inspire leaders and communities to seek reconciliation and harmony. And the scripture is from Matthew, chapter 5, verse 9. Blessed are the peacemakers for they will be called children of God. Amen. If you'll follow us in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the z symbol of perfect friendships among united cultures. Okay, so we are going to probably need to approve the agenda before we do the public hearing.
We can do that.
Okay, all right. I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And we're gonna move on to our public hearing. It's supposed to start at 9:05, so we're gonna be a couple of minutes early, but that's okay. Okay, so we're gonna discuss your public comment and consider approval of animal ordinance 24-02. Commissioner Barrella, are you alive?
I'm not alive, but I'm here.
Okay. I'm sorry you don't feel good.
I just didn't wanna get you guys sick.
Thank you for that.
Otherwise, I'd be sitting next to you hacking and coughing.
Yeah, thank you for not sharing.
I looked over all of the changes and for me, I'm prepared to make this ordinance pass.
Okay, Chair Black.
Where's the app?
She's right there. Were you in agreement or did we need to change anything?
No, I just, we spent probably two and a half hours with RB at the office and going through and everything.
I can tell by all the.
Yeah, so I think we got it pretty well squared away. I'm good with passing it today.
Okay, all right, good, thank you. RB, you good?
Yeah, the only thing to note that there was a change between the version that was posted with the agenda and that you received that I emailed to you last night. And it's available for people to look at today. And the changes was were to section 3-7, just eliminating a reference to a state statute. And then there was a gap between like 3.5 and 3.7. So I started the renumbering. And there still will be a lot of formatting changes as it's cleaned up. Because we wanted everyone to be able to see where changes were made and what they were. And the other change I made was to the penalties, to have a first offense option that only had fines on the table. That way, those cases can be prosecuted expeditiously and handled without the need for a public defender or jury. If there's repeat offenses, it can be charged under that. And at that point, jail for up to 90 days would also be on the table. And because jail is on the table, then a person accused of violating the ordinance would be entitled to a public defender and a jury trial.
All right. Any questions?
I'm good.
Commissioner Barrella, do you have anything else?
No, I would like to make a motion to accept the animal control ordinance.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, yay.
Praise the Lord. Thank you, everybody that worked on this for 10 years, it felt like. I think that's the shortest public hearing ever in the history of ever.
Yes.
Okay, so now we're gonna bring up Commissioner Tina Dixon. I feel we're introducing her.
My name is Tina Dixon. I'm with Roosevelt County Commission. I'm also here as a member of the Coalition of the Arizona and New Mexico Counties. Each year, the Coalition of Arizona and New Mexico Counties makes an award to elected officials, state employees, organizations, and individuals for outstanding contributions to advocating the missions of the Coalition. While we have presented these each year, not all awards are given. An individual organization must go above and beyond. The 2023 recipient for County Commissioner of the Year has set the bar high for achieving the level of commitment above and beyond to receive the awards. The New Mexico Commissioner of the Year for 2023 is Otero County Commissioner Vicki Markward. Commissioner Markward, in addition to operations of the Almagordo Physical Therapy and Wellness Center, which she recently retired for 21 years, plans time for family and voluntary activities. Commissioner Markward. More often on the road to the Capitol in Santa Fe or traveling to Washington, DC, advocating for her constituents and all citizens. When her fellow commissioners in other counties ask for assistance, Commissioner Markward is among the first to answer the call. Vicki is asked to speak on property rights across the state and rarely, if ever, uses the word no when called to help. Congratulations to Commissioner Vicki Markward, 2023 New Mexico Commissioner of the Year.
Please in now.
Please in here, buddy.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you, Tina, for driving all the way over here. I know that was a long drive from Roosevelt County, so thank you. I appreciate it.
You wouldn't have done it for.
I would've done it. I feel weird as me. Thank you, thank you. And the reason it's 2023, because everybody said, why did you just get here? Since we have New Mexico and Arizona Coalition of Counties, we have to drive so far for our meetings. Most of them are on soon. So we had our in-person meeting in Albuquerque last week. Oh, that's like 20 minutes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Tina.
Congratulations, Vicki. I read that yesterday.
Thank you, Amy. Okay. All right, we've got several proclamations and then we've got employee service awards. So I'm gonna be doing a lot of reading, so y'all get something to drink and put your feet up for a minute. Okay. Proclamation, whereas on July 4th, 2026, our nation will commemorate the semi-quincentennial anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. And whereas the journey towards this historic milestone is an opportunity to reflect on our nation's past, honor the contributions of all Americans, and look ahead to the future generations who will carry forward the ideas of democracy and individual liberty that make the United States a unique nation in the world community. And whereas the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution. The wording on this isn't right. It should be is a non-political women's service organization established in 1890 whose members are linearly descended from patriots of the American Revolution. And whereas through the president's general leadership, all daughters are spending the next three years celebrating Stars and Stripes Forever and rejoicing in our DAR ties of service and friendship by celebrating our nation's rich history and diversity, promoting belonging through membership and dedicated service to God, home, and country, and by completing projects in unique, local, impactful ways. This is awesome. Whereas the Lalo's Pottery Factory was founded and built by Roland Hazard III in 1930, descendant of DAR patriot Carter Hazard. In doing so, he created 41 private jobs in Otero County during the Great Depression. Whereas the State Daughter's dedication of America 250 Patriot Marker at Lalo's Pottery in Lalo's, New Mexico, on December 20th, 2024, proclaimed during the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners this 19th day of December, 2024. Did you wanna? This is really pretty cool. And when you guys got to Lalo's Pottery, there's a beautiful marker out there now that was just gonna dedicate it on Friday, right? At 1 o'clock.
1 o'clock.
That's right. Up here, let's flip this sucker around.
I'm the region of the white fans chapter, but that's okay. I can be president today. It's all right.
She's the chief dar.
They're called words.
Thank you, ma'am. And I will see you on Friday. Yes, with bells on. Okay.
Yes.
Oh. Oh, cool. So that's ours to keep. Okay, now we've got the service awards. And we've got a bunch. We have a lot of people that have worked a long time for this county. We're very proud of them. Okay. Lynn Estrada, 40 years. Holy cow. That's pretty cool. I think we just need to go down here and stay. Girl, you deserve a special place in heaven, 40 years. They're just open the gates for you and say, come on in. I'm taller than you. And I don't get to say that very often. Okay, Michael Mulliken, 20 years. Look at you, Mr. IT. Mr. Mike, the IT guy. I didn't even know your last name. I just didn't know you, Mike, the IT guy.
Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Daniel Kaywood, 15 years. Congratulations. That's a long time. We appreciate you.
I hear 40 is worth it.
Well, there you go. That's what they tell me. Thank you. Christopher Coley. Is he not here?
He's not here. He's out sick today.
Oh, are you kidding me? Well, okay, I'll just lay that right there. Well, he had 15 years. That's a long time, too. He's with our sheriff's office. Jesus Hernandez, 15 years.
He's not here either. He's working.
They're working. Oh, Ralph Murphy, 15 years.
There he is.
Way to go, Ralph. Thank you for. Come here, give me a hug. We gotta get a picture. Don't be running off.
Not in the picture.
Well, you're in this one.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you. Jonathan Emery, 15 years. Sergeant Emery's with our sheriff's office and does an amazing job. He's the IT genius. Thank you. Jennifer Lindstrom, 10 years. Can I hear? Misty Orr, 10 years. She's working, too. I tell you, that's why she's been here 10 years. Eileen Dorton, 10 years. Nope. William Wise, 10 years.
He's out today.
He's out today. Can you? Napoleon Phillips, 10 years. Sylvia Tilbrook, 10 years. Way to go, girl. Time to hike and have fun.
I blame.
You blame? Thanks, Sylvia. Crystal Delario, 10 years. Del Rio. Sorry, I'm dyslexic. Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Loretta Burks, 10 years. Congratulations.
Thank you, Loretta.
Julian Hall, five years. She takes care of our financials. Very important.
Yes.
Thank you, Julian.
We have her. We have the money and she said yes, and we're happy people. She says no, it's another work session. Ricardo Tarahas, five years. Ronnie, I just thought you were here. You feeling better? Have you recovered? Good. Jonathan Gutierrez, five years.
He's not here.
He's not here? He working, too. I tell you, these hard-working people. Taylor Dennis, five years. Yvonne Martinez, five years. She's working. I'm telling you. Dennis Anderson, five years. Abraham Zaldana, five years. Dave, the other IT, the head IT man. Congratulations, Dave. There you go. I'm gonna give you somebody else's. Might be weird to explain why that's on your wall. Taylor Parker, five years. I don't know how we ran the county before you came on and brought that out. I'm not sure how that ever worked.
I have a long way to 40.
We're gonna hold you to it, though. You're not going anywhere. Morin O'Connor, five years.
Working.
Working. Caleb Jones, five years. He working? And Jacob Bach, five years.
He's in training.
Okay. And then Eileen gets here. Okay. Eileen Dorton, 10 years. 10 years, girl.
Congratulations, thank you.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We will give those to. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our sheriff's office report.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Black, Otero County Sheriff.
Good morning.
Congratulations on your award.
Thank you.
That's pretty cool.
Thank you.
I know how many days, hours you spent doing that, so it's well deserved.
Thank you.
For November, for sheriff's office, 2,634 calls for service. Averages out to about 87.8 calls per day. Generated 225 investigative reports. Investigated 48 traffic crash investigations. Resulted in 74 arrests. We had one warrant that was served. Had 125 traffic citations that were served. We served 324 subpoenas for the courts. And calls responded to in Tulareosa was 78 for the month. 605 calls within the city of Almagordo. And 54 calls to within Village of Clotgrout. Something that I don't have the numbers yet, but I wanna start keeping track of. With this new competency diversion program that the judicial district here has implemented, our transports to Las Vegas, to mental health and stuff like that, they're going nuts. So I wanna keep track of those numbers. We've been in talk with some legislators about trying to work on some reimbursement for some of that stuff. RB and I have talked with a few and had another conversation yesterday about it. So I see. We got about 10 more people left to complete the Red Dot class that we started. I think that class is, the first part of January, we'll have that, that taken care of. Had three employees, Nathaniel Woodring, Javier Adriano, and Dynasty Guzman, who attended the Academy in Hobbs. On December 13th, they graduated from the Academy. They are now in, in what we call post-Academy. We got about two weeks that we'll get them back from the Academy. We'll make sure that they've got all their equipment, their uniforms, they're ready to rock and roll.
And they went to Hobbs.
They went to Hobbs this time, yes. We got some good products from the Hobbs Academy. I was, I was really impressed with, with what we got, so. And after the two weeks, they'll start their FTO program. Again, the two weeks is kind of get them prepared for FTO. So when they start that, we're not trying to find another uniform or, you know, some kind of equipment. They've got everything they need, so. And I do have three deputies that are currently in the pre-academy training, and they will go to the Hobbs Academy in January. As it stands today, I have four vacancies that need to be filled. I do have one lateral that we are working with right now that hopefully by the first week in January, he'll, he'll be onboard with us, so. And then we're going to have another hiring process. It'll start in January, see if we can get those other three positions filled. On our vehicles, we did get another completed, upfitted Tahoe that's put in rotation. And I'm hoping by, by the end of this week or middle of next week, we'll have two more turned out, ready to put in rotation, so. The three community services trucks that we ordered from the New Mexico Grow Money, they've all been striped and everything, and they are now ready for equipment install. Hopefully, we'll get that moving soon. Last thing, as far as an update on the deputy involved shooting of Elijah Hadley, I have no new information, you know, than what I gave you last, last month. We're still waiting on a decision from the Bernabeu County DA. And with that, I will stand for any questions that you may have.
David, you told me earlier today that you weren't going to be able to make the Chaparral event, the Christmas event. Is that just you personally or any deputies?
No, we're going to have a booth set up there, and we're going to have six deputies at the, at the event, possibly more, but we got six confirmed right now. And Deputy Robles has been in touch with the coordinator of that event. We've kind of helped him with some security aspects and stuff, you know, some lighting and stuff like that, because they're going to be foot traffic back and forth across county line. That, that concerned us. So they're going to get some lights and stuff up there and...
I just wanted to make, I'd make sure I understood you right, so.
Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll definitely have a presence there.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Barella?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
I didn't recognize you without your Santa hat on.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Barney, 911 Director. So for the month of November, we're showing a trend for the last couple of months. So for 911 calls, we did 2,400 911 calls into the 911 Center, a little over 1,000 E70s, which is our officer lines, and our admin lines. We did about 7,600 with a total of 11,234 calls into the 911 Center last month. We currently have seven communication officer positions open. We are in the process of backgrounds, and we are hoping mid-January, we're going to start a new hiring process, and we're going to revamp our training and orientation process for the 911 Center. We're, we're gonna, the EOC is now set up as our backup center, so we're going to use that as a training facility for new hires. Just some basic updates. We did transition to a new email, so we end with at TBRDA.org. Just like the Sheriff said, I have dispatchers in the biennial training. That's mandatory to complete by December 30th, so that should be finished up today with all of our communication officers. And then tomorrow is the last day for Toys for Tots that we are, help facilitate with Toys for Tots. So if there's any more drop-offs, you have till tomorrow morning sometime. And then the last thing is, Christmas is next week, and we're going to be doing our annual Christmas Santa Bolo on the radios at 8:00 PM on Tuesday night, so.
Oh, it's fun.
That'd be great.
Okay.
John, I just wanted to tell you thank you for the invite to the little get-together last night. It was very nice and...
Very nice.
Good cocoa and cookies and...
Yep.
Whoever made the biscachitos were on point. I ate those for dinner with hot chocolate.
No problem.
Thank you.
Did you have anything, Commissioner Barella?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, John.
Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Clark, 911. Sorry. I'm going to go home. That was John. Emergency Services. Yeah, I need 911, apparently. For November, our codes officers completed three solid K, solid waste, one junk vehicle, six open burns. We responded to 11 fire calls, six EMS calls. We completed two commercial structures for fire inspections. We do still have one case that's in court. It's our 1029 Mike Court. We have a warrant out still for that individual. So still pending on that one. Codes guys were off in training last month and this month. I got them off learning more about their job, so hopefully come out better educated, and that's always a good thing. November and December, we did multiple trainings with multiple agencies. State Police has been using our facility for a lot of their training of local law enforcement and law enforcement across the state, so it's great to see that they're able to do December 14th, we did the controlled burn on AD Second Street. Went very well. Heard good things about it. 17 Glenn, we're still trying to find some volunteers to go out and help out with that project to clean that one up, because that was one that was missed by Thrive. The dilapidated structures have all been torn down that we have submitted, so we're going around to find the next one that'll still fit in our remaining budget. Tractor Road, they're building a fence around that property. Little concerning about that. 53 Alma Terro, the case was filed in court December 16th. He had his day in court, and the judge gave him 60 days to clean up the property. My guys went out and looked, and they are starting to pull the vehicles off of the easement and tuck them back instead of get rid of them. But the easement area is starting to clear up. The volunteers, some of them held some recruiting events, some of them just constant social media, word of mouth. Alma West picked up two new members, Far South one, Hyrolls three, Or Vista picked up six, Sacweed picked up one. And the rest of them didn't pick up any. Earlier this month, we did Acer races out at Holloman with the volunteers, and Alma West went out and provided additional EMS support for them. Volunteers responded to 251 calls of service, 10 of them were fires, and 190 EMS calls. With that, if you have any questions.
Matt, I'd just like to, I was hoping Jacob would be here today. I was going to thank him and, and give him a, a big hand for the burn that they did Saturday is very well organized. I was, I even learned a lot. Jacob gave me some, he kind of walked me through as it was burning, telling me, this is what we look for when we do investigations. So it was very educational, and it looked like the, you had a bunch of new, I would say newer volunteers that were there, that were getting some good training, and you couldn't ask for a better day. I mean, the smoke, I know there was a lady right across the street complaining, but the smoke went directly up, and then it was perfect. You couldn't ask for a better day, so kudos to the group out there and all the firefighters, so.
I will pass that on to them.
Great job.
Other than that, I'm...
Commissioner Barella?
I want to say thank you for all the volunteer recruitment to those fire departments. That is exciting that we have that. And I also want to acknowledge that Matt and Jacob and RB attended a meeting for a neighborhood at the Alma Terro issues, and I appreciate the time they put into that, and it seems like everything's moving forward, cleaning up that property.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Tom Huggen again?
No. Yeah, he was here before.
I thought I saw him earlier.
Well, let's put him at the end, I guess.
Okay. Hey, Trent?
Good morning, Commissioners. Trent Parker, Project Manager. This month, I'll start with the road shop, office building, build out that we're doing for facilities. The framing was completed, the electrical roof was completed, and now they're into sheet rock, and we're working to get that finished up so that Eric can start utilizing that area. Hyrolls Fire Department expansion, the, the building itself, the new bays are complete. The department did want to add a mezzanine floor to the back part of the base for storage, and so that was constructed this month, and they're finishing it up today. And so we're pretty much finished with that. They also decided to, that they had the funding to put in a couple 11,000 gallon polywater storage tanks to add further water storage, so those tanks are being purchased, and I'm currently pricing out the dirt pads and plumbing to install those. That one keeps kind of growing, that project does, but we keep, keep taking care of it. 16 Springs Water Storage Tank is complete this month. The pump house was completed as well, and the electrical ran to it, so we're looking to be finished up with that in the next week or so, and they'll start being able to utilize that, that pump. James Canyon Fire Department, the pump houses are under contract, but the installation has been delayed. We're waiting on permitting and everything for those. It's been kind of held up through the holidays, but we're hoping to get started on those the first of the year. The electric, new electric service at the Cloud Country location, though, is, is in works, and so we're looking to have that electric pole set sometime at the first of the year as well. As Matt reported, the demo projects, we completed all of them. They're all cleaned up and went around, looked at them. On-call contractors worked out great. They did a really good job on that project, or those projects. Flickinger Center concession remodel. We had met with the executive director earlier in the year, and it was determined that we would wait till January, when they had a break in their schedule to do the work. So this month, we priced out the project in and out. It's under contract, and they're looking to start demoing on, on that on December 30th, so we're hoping to be complete on, or on or before January 17th, so.
Be nice to not have those popcorn lines all the way out into the theater.
Yeah. And with two cash register areas, they'll be able to help people out a little bit faster as well.
Yeah, I work that cash register pretty often.
Kind of, kind of gets jammed up in that area. The Detention Center, we're putting in wireless access points and doing an air fiber from the EOC out there to, to help them throughout the building, and so we're working on that. We got the equipment received, and we got the pricing for the cabling. And the only thing we're waiting on now is the pathway study to come back on the air fiber so that we know what's going to be needed to get that air fiber shot out there. Alma West Fire and Rescue, they received a grant this year, fire grant for some water storage tanks. So we, we've got the water storage tanks priced, and we're looking to purchase those, and we're currently pricing out the foundations for those in plumbing, so. Last but not least, Otero County Prison Roof. The first phase of the project we did a couple of years ago, we noticed that when they did the coating over the membrane, that it cracked quite a bit, and Commissioner Matherly, I think you've seen that. Throughout time and through the other phases of the roofing project, these cracks progressed and got a whole lot worse. Some of the cracking is up to an inch wide, so. Got ahold of the manufacturer, brought them in. They, they sent one of their main engineers and one of their warranty guys out, and we took some samples of the roof. They went and analyzed it. We've kind of gone back and forth, but long story short, they are now going to propose a fix on it. They originally proposed another coating. We told them, no, that's not what we paid for, and that, you know, so we're looking at possibly doing a complete tear-off and replacement of that first phase.
Wow.
But it will be warranted, so.
Good.
Labor and all?
Mm-hmm.
Good. That's good of you.
It's been a little bit of a battle, but we had to climb the ladder all the way to the top. We've been in contact with their regional president, and so.
Good.
That's about it.
So, Mr. Coquik, I was going to inform you, the new company that's in the design for the new facility down next to the prison, Trent and I have both been in contact with him several times, Trent helping him with any questions, so we are helping him with whatever we can to get them going on. We've, Trent has shared a few issues with them that they are glad that they know about now, so just letting... So those tanks are being purchased and I'm currently pricing out the dirt pads and plumbing to install those. That one keeps kind of growing, that project does, but we keep taking care of it. Sixteen Springs Water Storage Tank is complete this month. The pump house was completed as well and the electrical ran to it. So we're looking to be finished up with that in the next week or so. And they'll start being able to utilize that pump. James Canyon Fire Department, the pump houses are under contract, but the installation has been delayed because we're waiting on permitting and everything for those. It's been kind of held up through the holidays, but we're hoping to get started on those the first of the year. The electric, new electric service at the Cloud Country location though is in works. And so we're looking to have that electric pole set sometime at the first of the year as well. As Matt reported, the demo projects, we completed all of them. They're all cleaned up and went around, looked at them. On-call contractors worked out great. They did a really good job on that project or those projects. Flickinger Center concession remodel. We had met with the Executive Director earlier in the year and it was determined that we would wait till January when they had a break in their schedule to do the work. So this month, we priced out the project in and out, it's under contract and they're looking to start demoing on that on December thirtieth. We're hoping to be complete on or before January seventeenth.
Be nice to not have those popcorn lines all the way out into the theater.
Yeah, and with two cash register areas, they'll be able to help people out a little bit faster.
Yeah, I work that cash register pretty often.
Kind of gets jammed up in that area. The Detention Center, we're putting in wireless access points and doing an air fiber from the EOC out there to help them throughout the building. And so we're working on that. We got the equipment received and we got the pricing for the cabling. And the only thing we're waiting on now is the pathway study to come back on the air fiber so that we know what's going to be needed to get that air fiber shot out there. Alma West Fire and Rescue, they received a grant this year, fire grant for some water storage tanks. So we've got the water storage tanks priced and we're looking to purchase those and we're currently pricing out the foundations for those in plumbing. Last but not least, Otero County Prison Roof. The first phase of the project we did a couple of years ago, we noticed that when they did the coating over the membrane, that it cracked quite a bit. And Commissioner Matherly, I think you've seen that. Throughout time and through the other phases of the roofing project, these cracks progressed and got a whole lot worse. Some of the cracking is up to an inch wide. So got ahold of the manufacturer, brought them in. They sent one of their main engineers and one of their warranty guys out and we took some samples of the roof. They went and analyzed it. We've kind of gone back and forth, but long story short, they are now going to propose a fix on it. They originally proposed another coating. We told them, no, that's not what we paid for, you know. So we're looking at possibly doing a complete tear off and replacement of that first phase. But it will be warranted.
Labor and all?
Good, that's good.
It's been a little bit of a battle, but we had to climb the ladder all the way to the top. We've been in contact with their regional president.
So Mr. Coquikwick, I was going to inform you, the new company that's in the design for the new facility down next to the prison. Trent and I have both been in contact with them several times. Trent helping them with any questions. So we are helping them with whatever we can to get them going on. We've, Trent has shared a few issues with them that they are glad that they know about now. So just letting you know that we're helping them however we can to get that going. Trent, one other thing, have you heard any word status on the plans and the design on the courthouse and where we at?
All the schematics are complete now. January fourth, we will be going out for the RFP for the CMAR, which will be the selection for contractor for the project. The CMAR stands for Construction Manager at Risk. And so this is a little bit different than going through plan and design bid and all of that. We select a contractor when the design portion begins and the contractor works with the designer and with architects and engineers throughout the whole design of the project. And when the design is complete, there's a build out price that's agreed upon. And once the project starts, there's, the contractor's at risk of any mistakes or anything like that. There's no change orders, nothing like that. What the price is, is usually what the price is unless there's some kind of something that's out of everybody's control. But it was recommended to us by the, by ASA architects that are the architects on the project. And the more I've looked into it, I really like this way better. But RB, myself and Wendy, we've been working on the CMAR proposal request and that'll be going out January fourth. The design, from talking with the architect, they're hoping to be complete with the design by June and ready for construction.
Great. I was hoping this thing gets built before I leave here. It's been eight years, more than eight years of nightmare on that thing.
It should be. It's going great. That's all I have.
Commissioner Barella?
I don't have anything. Thank you, Trent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trent.
Each daily population at the detention center is a hundred and sixty-five. Total population today is a hundred and thirty-six. We have a hundred and six males, seventeen females. We do have four at Otero Prison. Four on treatment furloughs, two on out-of-county courts, one in Lincoln County. I have two juveniles, one in Dona Anna and one in Lee County. In-facility video courts, we had forty-six for municipal court, a hundred and twenty for magistrate court, eighty for district and out-of-county courts, eight. In-person courts, we had fourteen district, nine magistrate. As far as vacancies, have sixteen full-time detention officer vacancies. I have one part-time. We do have an interview tomorrow set up and tomorrow morning at a testing and interview. As far as training, we did have some CPR and first aid and we had body scanner training and testing that has been installed. We're waiting for it to be certified through the state before we, we have to file an application before we can use it. So it's there, it's installed, it's ready to go. Department of Corrections, we had eight males transported to the Central New Mexico Correctional Facility in Las Lunes. We had three females to the Women's Western Correctional Facility in Grants. We transported one to the Salvation Army and we transported one to the Peak in Santa Teresa. As far as the inmate kitchen worker program, we did have five inmate kitchen workers complete the pre-safe serve certificates for the kitchen. On November twenty-fifth, we did start the kitchen equipment training as well. November twentieth, I already said this, but we had the body scanner installed. We did select winners for the art contest for the detainees for Thanksgiving. I do have pictures if you'd like to see. And we did give first, second, and third prize winners. And for December, we're doing an ornament contest that will pick up on the twentieth for staff vote on it in the facility for who the winners are for the ornaments. Very creative.
Those are good.
We create first place too.
Third place turkey. Wow, that's good. Never seen a turkey smoking a cigarette. That's a first.
Oh, it's not actually a cigarette, but.
Got another one with sunglasses.
We do display them in the lobby area of the detention center so that the public can see as well.
So very good.
Yes, talented.
Very talented people up there.
Thank you for sharing. Anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. Forest Service, Ronnie? Thank you. Thank you, Tina. Be safe.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Welcome back.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm glad you're okay. Good to see you.
Thank you, Amy. Appreciate it. Yeah, Ron Mays, District Ranger on the Sacramento Ranger District, Lincoln National Forest. For FY twenty-five, we recently finished our program of work for next year and we have prioritized all our projects. And for the district up here, of course, ongoing. But I think we finally have a decision coming out for the South Sacramento Restoration Project, which is a landscape project of a hundred and twenty-some odd thousand acres. And so we'll start having timber sales go out for bed at the end of this next calendar year. So that's good news. We're finally making progress in getting that project implemented. And that certainly will help various programs on the forest and in the county, including livestock grazing. So that's good news. We're also prioritizing our Cloudcroft Wild and Urban Interface Project. We'll have a decision, I hope, by June of next year. And so we'll be implementing that as well. That will primarily be fuel wood, but there will be some opportunities for some sales in that project area. We are also prioritizing the Denny Hill Project, our fuels reduction project between Mayhill and Weed, which will primarily focus on reducing or thinning some of the junipers in those areas. It's primarily Pinot Juniper and Ponderosa Pine. But there, and that'll primarily be a fuel wood project as well. So anyway, we are cooperating with NRCS and Soil and Water Conservation District here in Otero to assess the viability of continuing the operation of the dams on the east side of the district, Graveyard Canyon, Curtis Canyon and Bear Canyon dams. And so they're hoping to have public meetings here in the first part of January twenty-five that I think they're going to conduct down here in Alamagordo as well as with the Forest Service. And so that's ongoing. We have, we had the opportunity to permit the village of Cloudcroft to take a nice thirty-foot Christmas tree and put it up in the courtyard there at the Otero County Electric Co-op. It's a beautiful tree. We also permitted military to take thirty, about thirty-some odd Christmas trees for the spouses of military individuals that are deployed abroad. So that makes me happy that we can participate in those types of things. And so other than that, I don't think I have anything else for you all at this point in time. But if there's any questions that you have, I guess we are moving into our 2025 grazing season. And so we're conducting all our annual operating instruction meetings with all the permities on the district. And so it seems to be going smoothly, working with our RTF to Range Improvement Task Force, sorry, to, you know, resolve some of the issues that we faced in the past that you're well aware of. And so we hope to make some good progress here coming into twenty-five, so.
Me too. Have you heard anything else about Mesclero opening their sawmill backup?
Just that they plan to. And so that will be good for the Lincoln as well. Because part of the problems with a lot of the timber sales that we have, including some in the Sixteen Springs area, is that we have very few bidders and there's really nowhere for the material to go. So having a local mill that can take some of that material will be great. That's all I've heard.
Ron, I went to the Soil and Conservation Luncheon last month, or this month, actually. And I thought they were done with, they'd already done the work on the dams in those three locations. Is this additional work?
This is additional work. This is the next phase, yeah. So they did some work in terms of maintaining the dams, the outflows and vegetation around the dam. This is to really assess whether or not they can continue to operate those dams safely over the next few decades. And so that's what we're going to do.
Ron, who is, is that the Forest Service that's conducting that assessment or?
No, a contractor, RJH is contracted with the Soil and Conservation District and NRCS.
Okay, and so you guys are just facilitating where you can?
Yeah, yeah. We will likely be a cooperator on the NIPA part of that project, so.
Okay, okay, all right. If necessary, there is a couple other sources of funding that have been approved that relate to the Corps of Engineers that, like, we should probably, we should be talking and coordinating so that that is incorporated and we're not doubling up on work.
Okay, thank you.
Can I understand you're headed Albuquerque?
What's that?
I understand you're headed Albuquerque now?
Yes, I am. I am. So January twelfth, I think, I'll be in Albuquerque.
Well, we will miss you because I know that you've tried to work with us.
And it's been a pleasure.
Sometimes it's not fun. Sometimes it has not been a pleasure.
No, no, but I mean.
We have appreciated your help.
You bet. I'll miss you guys. I'll miss the county. I'll miss the Lincoln and I sure hope things go well.
We appreciate you working with us.
Thank you for all your help, Ron.
I don't think Tom ever came back in.
He just texted me and whoever was answering for his department, it wasn't him. He's in training, he says. He's not here.
Okay, so nobody's coming for him. Okay, all right. Well, there you go. Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda items. We didn't pull any of these, so we've got several. Did Amy, did you have anything you wanted to pull?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Number two, request approval of accounts payable bills, BL eighteen, nineteen, nineteen A and twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. Number three, request approval of November seventh, twenty twenty-four special meeting minutes. Number four, request approval of November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes. Number five, request approval to award RFP twenty-five dash zero zero three broadband manager services to Grant Works Incorporated. Number six, request approval of resolution number twelve dash nineteen dash twenty-four slash one thirteen dash twenty-six regarding the twenty twenty-five compliance with the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. Number seven, request approval of resolution number twelve dash nineteen dash twenty-four slash one thirteen dash thirty-one, budget adjustments December twenty twenty-four. Number eight, request approval of resolution number twelve dash nineteen dash twenty-four slash one thirteen dash thirty-three, a resolution expressing the urgent need for the Chaparral Public Safety Facility and encouraging funding support from the state of New Mexico. Number nine, request approval of the twenty twenty-five commission meeting schedule. Number ten, request approval of the twenty twenty-five holiday schedule. Number eleven, request approval to reappoint Odie Prather, Judy Maderos, Earl Sturman, Robin Hames and Darryl Brown to the Public Land Use Advisory Council. Number twelve, requesting approval for the agreement between Otero County Solid Waste and the Village of Tularosa in the amount of a hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents per trip. Number thirteen, request approval of an agreement between Otero County and Center on Rural Innovation for Broadband Consulting in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars. Number fourteen, request approval of a solar energy system decommissioning agreement between Otero County and Pluma Solar Tularosa LLC. Number fifteen, request approval of the twenty twenty-two sub-grant agreement between Otero County and State of New Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for the operation Stone Garden in the amount of three hundred and one thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Number sixteen, request approval to submit annual Public Employees Retirement Association reports for volunteer firefighters under the Volunteer Firefighter Retirement Act. Number seventeen, request approval to submit annual fund act and service reports to New Mexico Emergency Medical Systems Bureau. Number eighteen, request approval of an agreement between the County of Otero and the United States Department of Agriculture Forest Service, Lincoln National Forest. Number nineteen, request approval, an amendment between Otero County and Dr. Ronald Chad Carver as the Otero County Medical Director for twenty twenty-five. Number twenty, requesting approval of an agreement between Otero County and Santa Fe County for inmate confinement at the cost of two hundred and twenty dollars per inmate per day. Number twenty-one, request approval of an agreement between Otero County and Curry County for detainee confinement at the cost of a hundred and twenty-five dollars per inmate per day. Number twenty-two, request approval to accept Yucca Subdivision Phase Two for permanent county road maintenance located in Chaparral, New Mexico. Number twenty-three, request approval to name a private drive as Joyful Trail, listing the road as a private dirt road. Do you want to make a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
What's thinking, Matt?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to our scheduled citizens communication. Diana Driscoll, Events Coordinator for the Otero Practical Shooting Association, presentation and recap of the thirteenth New Mexico High Desert Championship match held at the shooting range. Looks like you got a broken wing there, girl.
I got a new knee.
Good.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to thank the Otero County Commission for allowing me to speak today. My name is Diana Driscoll. I am an active member of the Otero Practical Shooting Association, OPSA. OPSA is a nonprofit shooting club that calls the Sidney Paul Gordon Shooting Range its home. We provide fun local shooting competitions to the public. I happen to be the Events Coordinator for the club and the Match Director for our United States Practical Shooting Association, or USPSA, division. But we also host twenty-two rimfire fun matches, matches geared towards twenty-two National Rifle League style shooting, fun intro-style pistol matches and occasional practical shotgun matches and two- and three-gun style matches. For the division that I am Match Director for, USPSA, the Sidney Paul Gordon Shooting Range is one of four ranges within two and a half hours of Alamagordo that host these types of matches. The closest of the other three is in Los Cruces, then we have Fort Bliss in El Paso and Carlsbad. These ranges and communities are what we consider to be local to us and we will tend to draw people from these communities for our local matches that we host monthly. We would love to draw shooters from all over the state and occasionally we do pull some people down from Albuquerque. But we just host currently small local matches. USPSA is a grandfather organization that provides dynamic practical shooting competitions to people across the country. A typical local match, which we usually host once a month, will consist of four to six stages. Larger regional type matches consist of ten to fifteen stages and for the first time in a long time, we were able to actually host one of those at the range this year. And a national match will have eighteen to twenty-four stages. Each stage has specifically designated shooting areas. The course of fire will provide movement and vision barriers that make the shooter devise a plan on how to engage all of the paper and steal targets as accurately and quickly as possible. USPSA divides the country into areas to manage the country's shooting population that participates in the sport. Those areas are further divided into sections and we are obviously part of the New Mexico section. Each section is allowed to host a large regional event with the intent to draw shooters from at the very least the entire section, which include New Mexico and Durango and El Paso. But also from the whole area, our area is Area Two, which includes California, Hawaii, Arizona, New Mexico and Colorado and Texas. Each section, but you can also, that would be the whole area. And depending on the quality of the match, we would like to draw shooters from across the country. For a section match to be held at a range, the range has to be large enough to host. For a section match to be held at a range, the range has to be large enough to host the event. This boils down to having enough bays to place at least ten stages, with the ideal size being fourteen to fifteen bays. There are not that many ranges in the New Mexico section that can provide this, and most of them are the Albuquerque area. The main range in Albuquerque that used to host a large match every year became unusable due to city politics. Another range in Albuquerque area was in limbo, being on the real estate market for sale. The third range, which was big enough to have the match, had eleven miles of horrendous washed-out road that you had to drive down. There were a lot of critiques of the previous years and many shooters said that they would never shoot the New Mexico Sectionals again. So the planning process for the twenty twenty-four New Mexico State Section Match began with a look at the southern ranges and the chance of redemption. Our club stepped up and agreed to host the match and do our best to revitalize it. Planning began at the very beginning of the year. Tons of hours were spent ironing out the details, planning the stages, finding sponsors, prepping the range, putting the match on the ground and proofing the stages. We got the word out about the match through social media, also at our local matches and other local matches around the state. We knew that when we were going into this, this was going to be a proving ground to show that we can provide an excellent product to shooters who may have been disappointed at past New Mexico Section matches. So on Tuesday, October eighth of this year, we began the buildup, putting all the stages on the ground on the upper bays that are not currently public-use bays. We continued building on Wednesday, when the range is usually closed. Then Mark Douglas, the Range Master, closed the range to the public Thursday and Friday for our final buildup, staff shooting and stage proofing. And then also through Saturday and Sunday for the main event. We managed to bring in a hundred forty-two shooters to the match. Of those shooters, thirty-five were what I would consider local, meaning the drive from their home would be easily doable each morning of the shooting day and there would be two shooting days. Those people would normally shoot at the four ranges I mentioned earlier, Las Cruces, El Paso, Carlsbad and obviously here. The other one hundred and seven people were from far enough out where they would be getting a hotel or Airbnb. They would bring their RV or some other type of accommodation. We had sixty-six shooters from New Mexico that would not be considered local, meaning Albuquerque, Farmington, Silver City. There were seventeen shooters from Arizona, ten from Texas, eight from Colorado and one each from Georgia, Alabama, North Carolina, Idaho and Oklahoma. We figure these non-local shooters pumped quite a bit of money into the Otero County economy. They all arrived on Friday at some time, at some time, because the stages were available for preview to the competitors. So Friday night, they ate dinner at our local restaurants. They probably stopped at the store to pick up snacks and drinks or whatever thing they forgot at home. They went to their hotels or their other accommodations. Saturday morning, they may have bought breakfast somewhere. Rinse and repeat for Saturday night and Sunday morning. Some of them, especially the ones from further away, like the gentleman from Idaho, spent the whole week in the area, taking in cloudcroft, white sands, the pistachio farms, the Space Hall of Fame and other various attractions. I know when my husband and I attend out-of-town matches, we tend to spend about two thousand dollars on the trip, including fuel, match fees, accommodations, food and other supplies. Not all of that money is spent at the destination, but a large portion of it is. So we had a hundred and seven people spending this kind of money in our county. At the culmination of the event, when all the awards and prizes had been handed out, the recurring theme that this was the best section match ever. And I mean, we got people from all over the country. I didn't hear one single complaint from any of the competitors. And that was saying an awful lot since a large portion of our staff were unable to attend at the last minute, leaving us way understaffed. There were absolutely no complaints about the range. For once, it was an easy, short drive to the front, to to the front gate. The roads were paved all the way to the front gate. There were no complaints of price gouging at the hotels. Usually the match is in Albuquerque and it's around balloon fiesta and you know what the prices are going to be at the hotels. We were lucky enough to be able to find two food trucks to come out to the range Friday, Saturday and Sunday to provide food for the attendees. Lucky because all the rest of the food trucks were at the Battle of the Food Trucks in Alamogordo. And I'll give a huge shout out to Lance Gardner with his Au Ju food truck. On Saturday, he saw that the taco truck wasn't getting much business, so he started piling the food on people's plates so he could sell out quicker and then send the rest of the competitors to the other truck so he can make some money as well. People raved about having real bathrooms with running water. They were able to go into the office and buy ice cream. If they needed more ammo, there was ammo there. If they forgot their ear protection or their eye protection, there was supplies there in the office. They were impressed with the layout of the range, the size of the bays, the huge berms and backstops that make it as safe as possible to host events like this. The staff was absolutely amazing at making this event possible. Obviously, Range Master Mark Douglas, but most notably Chief Range Safety Officer Chelsea Zimmerman and Range Intendents Chuck Sampson and Sarah Doris all went above and beyond to help us make this the huge success it was. They provided trashcans and canopies that graded the bays to make the ground as flat and safe as possible. They brought up buckets of dirt to place behind targets to make shooting them as safe as possible. They provided the areas for the porta-potties. They answered questions. They helped to direct people. And they did everything they could to make this match the success it was. My goal was to make this the best section match ever and I believe we accomplished this. So many of the out-of-town people said that next year they're going to be telling all of their friends that this is the match to go to. We want this match to grow to be a three hundred, four hundred person match. When it is all said and done, this match would have not been possible without the vision that Mark Douglas has been relentlessly pursuing. The vision to make the Sidney Paul Gordon Shooting Range the best range in New Mexico. His desire to bring large, regional and even possibly national shooting events to his range is what made this possible. We could have not hosted this match without the addition of the four general purpose bays and the new one hundred yard bay. If the range continues to grow and add more bays, the sky will be the limit on the types of large matches the range will be able to host. The larger area matches can easily bring in four hundred to five hundred shooters. So you can imagine the dollar signs and the economic impact that can have for Otero County. We hope this year's section match opens the door for many more large events at the range. Mark's desire to make this range the best place to shoot has been so reported by you, the county commissioners. And I would like to give you my sincere thanks for helping to bring large shooting events to my hometown. This is something I'm very passionate about. Your support of his vision will help keep the shooting sports alive and for that, I'm truly grateful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you and thank you for all the work. I mean, all the emails I've gotten have been amazing. Congratulations. And when I look in the dictionary under relentless, there is a picture of Mark and that shooting range right next to it. Thank you. Okay, Nolan Poheda would like to discuss the amendment to the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Otero County Community Service Grant.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, staff. So um, as you guys know, our first small business accelerator was very successful. And then uh, the long-awaited construction sprung on us. Uh, we literally found out at the same time as our business owners uh, back in October that they were going to finally break ground, which was incredibly exciting. But it has caused some hardship for our businesses along New York Avenue. Many of the businesses are reporting downturns of revenue by forty to fifty percent. Luckily for us, many still did very, very well on Small Business Saturday. Many still did very, very well at Christmas on Main Street, which we just had, which was a great event, great turnout. But staring down the barrel of this lasting about a year, we're probably not going to finish construction until next November. The idea of trying to launch new businesses in brick and mortars specifically along New York Avenue just doesn't seem like the best-case scenario for anyone who would participate in the accelerator. So we all, my board, all put their heads together and we decided, what's a way we could pivot to still utilize this grant in light of the construction that could still benefit potential entrepreneurs who want to open up here in Alamogordo and in Otero County? Well, one of the things we struggled with really, really intensely during our first round of the accelerator, which we learned a lot, was we have so many people here who want to open up unique restaurant-style businesses. Specifically, we got to try um, food from Nigeria and we got to try food from this young man named Zach who does amazing vegan food. His vegan green chili macaroni and cheese was phenomenal. But the cost of installing a fully utilized commercial kitchen in a brick and mortar is just outside of our means at this point. So hosting this style business really isn't something we can do. We can install, you know, what I call a commercial kitchen light, which is what our current coffee shop, Infinity Suites. That's what we were able to put in the building for them and they're currently using it. But full-blown commercial kitchens just are kind of out of our our scope right now. So we thought, with construction happening, could we pivot to buy a food trailer? If we have the food trailer, we could use it in several different ways. Number one, we could still park it in downtown in some of the lots that are open so people could still reach that food trailer. We could host these restaurant-style business, um, business models in a fully-approved commercial kitchen, still get them experience, still get eyes on them and still help them generate revenue to hopefully either move on and get their own food trailers or potentially maybe find a spot to open a restaurant. The other thing that this allows us to do is for future iterations, even if we are doing, we go, you know, the goal is to go back to the brick and mortar idea so we can attack that blight, open up new storefronts permanently in our downtown. Well, this would also allow us to park that food trailer by those brick and mortars so that they could, we could still continue to host these restaurant-style business models in the future. The main benefit for this is if we pivot this year, most of this funding will probably go, if not all of it, will end up going to the build-out of the food trailer. Uh, we could purchase a brand-new, off-the-shelf, custom food trailer for about forty thousand dollars. And then next year, so there's a lot more that goes into opening a food business, right? There's a lot more permitting, there's a lot more training, there's a lot more certifications you need to get. So we would be entering into a much more robust and much more focused um, education piece for the next accelerator. We would be focused primarily on restaurant-style business models and we would be partnering with folks like Learn New Mexico that do the the foods, whatever supervisor or food safety training thing that they do. And so we would be really honing down, we'd be extending our education practice for next year. So instead of just a six-week course, we're looking at probably a ten-week course. Instead of once a week, we're probably looking at multiple days a week that these folks would be in classroom settings. And then, once that would happen, we would then move them on to the application process to host them in the food truck. Get them some training onsite in the food truck with current food truck operators that are here in the area that have a lot of experience, help kind of coach them through their first few settings, actually having to serve customers because it gets really hectic really fast. And then we would move them into sitting in the food truck, running their business for probably three to four months and we would run two different businesses through that. So this fiscal year would be just focused on getting the food trailer with this funding. Next fiscal year would be focused on the education piece with the participants and the actual rotations through the food truck. And that's basically kind of where we're going with it. What do you, what do you guys think? Any, any questions for me?
I have, I have one. I mean, I appreciate you going out and you're looking to expand somebody's future, trying to teach. But I really feel the situation this year on that street, everybody getting hurt. I would really like to see you disperse the funding to the businesses on that street to help them get through. I don't know if legally, if that's a possibility, but uh, I know some of them are hurting.
Oh, yes.
So I hate to go off and take some money that is right there that we could help them. Don't get me wrong, your idea of going for, that's a great idea, but I'm thinking about the people on the street right now, which is what I think we give this money to.
Any issues with doing that? Is that?
I mean, it would, it would kind of, what, we would model it like a grant? Basically, we would take the grant as Main Street and then model our own grant program for the businesses. Kind of like that, we'd be like a coordinating grant program?
Yeah, we'll need to put um, something together where it's a, a, a grant to support
Small business.
Whatever, Main Street, something, something program that makes it where you're providing it and it has um, because we gotta make sure we're not veering into anti-donation clause um, territory, so.
I have a question. What if we modeled it like the job training programs do and we actually pay businesses to host some money, um, to show them how they run their business? And so we're basically paying their wages with that grant money and say like Victoria's goes in and we're paying somebody to, um, for Victoria's to train how to run that kind of a business? Is that something that's available to do?
That, that, that could be a way to accomplish it. Um, I think uh,
I mean, I like that idea. The, I don't know if that would help the businesses with their bottom line if we're just covering the salary of a trainee. You know what I mean? Because right, so what we have, we do have this thing called, like, we're calling it the Safety Net Grant in place right now. We did a lot of fundraising um, leading up to construction starting. We don't have a lot of money in that, in that account. We have, I think, about twenty-five hundred dollars in that account. Where the businesses are aware if they need, let's say, they just need two hundred dollars to make rent that month because foot traffic has, has dropped. They can apply for that two hundred dollars and basically we say, okay, yeah, you're not going to close your doors over two hundred dollars, three hundred dollars. And then once the money's out, it's out. So far, no one has um, applied for any of that funding yet, but you know, we're still, we're not even halfway through construction. So we already kind of have something like a, it's kind of like a emergency, you know, grant in place, sort of. I don't know.
I, I think if, if, if that is the commission's preference and if uh, Main Street is represented by Nolan is um, uh, interested in that, then uh, we can take that today and go to the drawing board and uh, not shoot from the hip and come up with something that um, would, would um, cover the desires of the commission and um, and also what Main Street wants and uh, that we can put it in a framework that uh, works legally. And then maybe we bring it back in, at the January meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
I, I just really kind of want to help the businesses over there.
That will.
I mean, this year, this is kind of a, I drive by, I watch the sidewalks. I know they got orange fences on them, but there's not very many people walking down.
Well, and, and you know, it is, it is true that it's probably actually going to get even a little more difficult because right now the plan for, um, this is phase one, is the utility work. Uh, phase two is all the above-ground stuff. So uh, starting January thirteenth, uh, phase two will begin. And that, this phase where the sidewalks are still open, but when they start ripping out the sidewalks, you know, the city, I will, I will give the city a lot of credit and contractors a lot of credit, getting rid of sidewalks, they're waiting until the alleys are fully paved and the asphalt's cured before moving into that area and ripping those sidewalks out. And so they're going to kind of chase behind the asphalting in the, in the alleyways before they touch the sidewalks. That way rear entries can be used and they'll have nice paved areas to, for customers and stuff to walk on. So I give them a lot of credit, but we do have a handful of businesses that do not have rear access at all. So I think it would be a huge statement to my business owners in my downtown district for you guys to do something like this for them. I think it would mean a lot to them.
We definitely support the businesses and we know they're hurting and we definitely don't want our downtown to die.
I think it could make a beautiful story about how we, how we take care of each other here in Otero County. Um, obviously, I will have to bring it back to my board. I don't get to make decisions. But I can bring it to the board and then get back with, with RB and shoot you, you know, and we'll just go from there.
Okay.
Great.
Sounds good to me. Amy?
No, sounds great. Thank you very much.
Okay, alright.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Nolan.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you too.
Do you have anybody on the unscheduled?
Nope. Susan, I think Susan was the one that took the confirmation, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't have anybody.
And I think if it's all right with the other com- And I think if it's all right with the other commissioners, we're going to move number thirty-six up to the first item under new business so that our friends from Chaparral don't have to sit here through the rest of this if they, they can start their trek back down south. Is that okay with you?
That's fine with me.
Okay. All right, so under new business, we'll start with number six. Request approval of final plat for the Outback Acres located in Chaparral, New Mexico.
We wouldn't have it any other way.
Wouldn't have it any other way. Madam Chair, Commissioner Matherly, Commissioner Borella, thank you for allowing me to come before your presence one more time. I, I do, and hopefully the final plat approval of Outback Acres subdivision located in Chaparral, New Mexico. Uh, this is a three-hundred-and-one lot subdivision, planned subdivision. And, um, I was here last month, went through the public hearing, and we're here to ask the approval of the commission for this final plat. And I'm open to any questions or anything else the commission may have.
I think the, the commission has, or the planning commission has got everything approved. I didn't hear any feedback. Everything great.
We haven't had anything back that has been negative and that hasn't been addressed, any concerns.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
You're good with it?
I am.
You are?
I, I am. Commissioner Borella?
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right. I will make a motion for the approval of final plat for the Outback Acres located in Chaparral, New Mexico.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, thank you so much again.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and, and all of the...
And all those things.
And all those things.
Merry Christmas.
Do you want to sign? Does she need to sign anything?
Yes, if we could, but I can wait around.
I can do that. In that way, you guys, we'll take a little break. If y'all want to take a restroom break and then I'll sign those and then we'll get back to it.
All right.
Do I need to sign any?
Commissioner, I guess we have some, some committees here.
Oh.
On behalf...
I'll add a few extra pounds.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
No questions, I completely support it.
Okay, all right, well then I make a motion for the approval of resolution number 12-19-24/113-27, addressing the administration of federal lands by the U.S. Department of Agriculture Forest Service.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number 28, request approval of resolution number 12-19-24/113-28, addressing the reinstatement of the district grazing advisory boards as outlined in Federal Land Policy and Management Act. Anybody have any comments on this?
Again, this is another support for questions they have on the, on some of the issues.
Okay. Commissioner Barella?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, number 29, request approval of resolution number 12-19-24/113-29, a resolution urging the New Mexico State Engineers Office to adhere to New Mexico water statutes.
Again, this is another one for the same support through issues and questions that they have.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Barella, any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, number 30, request approval of resolution number 12-19-24/113-32, a resolution expressing support for President Trump's initiative to reduce regulatory burden and overreach, and encouraging Congress to pass the Regulations from the Executive in Need of Scrutiny Act of 2024. I think this was really important because I think we've been overregulated to death, and I think that it can save us a lot of money if we can do this. Would you like me to read this, or do you guys have any questions, or do you want to?
I'm good with it.
Okay. Commissioner Barella?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, then I make a motion for the approval of resolution number 12-19-24/113-32, a resolution expressing support for President Trump's initiative.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, number 31, request approval of resolution number 12-19-24/113-34, a resolution establishing county lodgers tax forms and procedures.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you may recall, you passed the lodgers tax in May, and at that time, we set it to go into effect on January 1st of 2025, and that's just a few days away now. And then you also set a grace period or a break-in period where the upholding the ordinance or executing the ordinance and actually abiding by the penalties and stuff would not go into effect for another 60 days to give everyone time to, including us, to have all the bugs worked out and have a framework. And so as part of that, this resolution is to put that framework in place as far as forms for the administration of the tax and the collection of the tax, and then the use of the funds that come from the tax. So, the way this is written, it's to provide a basic framework for this. There may be changes as we start putting it into place, so it's written so that those can occur. I've spoken with the incoming treasurer, Mr. Melton, and he is on board for the collection of those funds to be handled in the treasurer's office. And the way the ordinance is written, that can be changed, or that doesn't have to happen should there be another treasurer down the road that feels differently. There's flexibility built within, so it can be adjusted. But for now, Mr. Melton is on board with, for that, and it makes sense because the money ultimately has to go to the treasurer anyways. And there's these base forms, but within the resolution, it states that online portals that follow the basic framework of the forms can be utilized, and I think that would be the ideal way to manage this and would make it easiest for everyone to track and see what's going on. And then, as far as enforcement, I believe that would fall under a code enforcement function, and I need work with code enforcement to develop policies and procedures for enforcing it, identification of entities that should be doing it, that aren't, and then notifying them, educating them. And that will require coordination between code enforcement and the treasurer's office. I think that can happen. Fortunately, like the vast majority of these are going to be on Airbnb, which will collect it from the members that are posting their Airbnbs, and they will remit it from Airbnb to the county. So on that front, it's pretty simple and straightforward. The challenges will be the RV parks, hostels, and entities or places that aren't being listed on Airbnb but are using other sites that may not be collecting it. And then, as far as the use of the funds for tourism development and marketing, that will be handled in the manager's office. And that can be done with an online portal or using the forms that are here. And then, of course, we'll need to set up the committee that will make decisions or recommendations to you for how the funds should be used. And that'll be the next step. There's not going to be, it's going to take time for money to come in and then applications to get put in. So we have some time to stand up that committee, but that'll be the next step. And then they'll make recommendations to you, of course, and then we'll make decisions on where that money goes.
Is there any way to put? I recently had a call from somebody up in Cloudcroft, and they said that there's a house that's in their subdivision that's just almost always rented out, like Airbnb, and it's just a party house. And there's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of noise, there's, you know, loud music. Is there anything that we can build into these that would help protect the people that actually live in that neighborhood full-time?
Not with this per se. There could be an ordinance that covers short-term rentals in the community. And depending where they're at in Cloudcroft, I don't know, did they know if they were outside of the Cloudcroft limits?
They are.
Oh, okay, okay, so yeah. There's nothing in place currently, and with that, anyone that's operating currently could, is probably grandfathered in. So something for them to look at would be if the subdivision has any restrictive covenants, and they could go after it. With that, it's a delicate balance because at one point, we want to encourage business and tourism, and there's not currently enough hotels or motels or other conventional lodging to support the demand for the area. So we don't want to cut that off, but I can also see where it would be annoying if you were next to a non-stop party house. So, you know, it depends on, we do have noise ordinance in place, and, you know, that could be a call to the sheriff's office if they're disturbing everyone that much.
I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner Barella?
No, I'm good. Does this allow for them to have like a online access to pay their taxes and fill out their forms online, or is this all going to be done for paper for now?
It allows for the development of an online system, which I think would be the best. But, so the next step is for the treasurer, probably the treasurer, to get with IT and work on building that into the treasurer's webpage.
Perfect, that's all I have.
Good, RB, that would have to be a totally separate. You'd have to have that set up totally different than your property tax where you come in and pay that. It's going to have to be a total different, right?
It'll be a different account, and I can't remember if you got, I think you pay tax, your property tax online.
Yeah, you can.
So it just, yeah, it'd be a separate pages that you would click on and send the money to.
Anything else?
No.
All right. I make a motion for the approval of resolution number 12-19-24/113-34, a resolution establishing county lodgers tax forms and procedures.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, number 32, request approval of resolution number 12-19-24/113-35, a resolution designating general fund purposes for the county lodgers tax.
Funds that are used, that are collected from the lodgers tax for any lodging 30 days or less have very specific statutory purposes that apply to tourism and supporting increasing visitation to the county, and also the operation of the lodgers tax. Separately, the funds collected for any lodging that exceeds 30 days, that can be put to any general fund purpose that the commission designates. And so, on an annual basis, this will be something the commission can look at and designate where they would like the money to go to for that year. Right now, we don't know how much that's going to amount to or anything. But for this first year, myself and the county manager discussed it, and the two areas that we came up with were the Keep Otero County Beautiful Program and road maintenance. Certainly, we want our visitors to have the best roads possible so that they come back. And, but if there's any other places that you have in mind, we could add those now.
I think those are two good choices.
No, I'm good.
Commissioner Barella?
I am good.
Okay, all right. I make a motion for the approval of resolution number 12-19-24/113-35, a resolution designating general fund purposes for the county lodgers tax.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, number 33, request approval to provide a platinum sponsorship for Otero County Days in the amount of $3,500 from the commission discretionary funds. This is for the Otero County Days that the Chamber of Commerce puts on in Santa Fe to promote Otero County and to have us meet all of our legislators while we're up there. We did our first one last year, and it was very successful. We had a really good turnout, and I know RB came up for it and his wife, and so we're going to do it again this year. And Otero County didn't, I put some personal money into it last year. I, you know, gave him just to kind of get my foot in the door and kind of see what was going on, and I've been helping, you know, them put this on, and it's very worthwhile. So that's why I'm asking to use part of our discretionary funds for this. Any questions? Commissioner Barella?
No questions.
Okay, I make a motion for the approval to provide a platinum sponsorship for Otero County Days in the amount of $3,500 from the commissioner discretionary funds.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, number 34, request approval of multi-line and law enforcement coverage for 2025, selecting NMC for multi-line and law enforcement sheriff coverage with QBE specialty for law enforcement detention.
Commissioners, Matt Clark, Emergency Services. This was what our broker, Daniel's Insurance, was able to find for us. A big increase is happening across the board with New Mexico counties on their buildings and vehicles. A lot of our buildings across New Mexico have been underinsured, and they're trying to play catch-up now. So that's the big hit there for line number one. The law enforcement with QBE, I went back and checked my emails to make sure that there were no updates. The premium that I actually just got from him a couple days ago is $279,314 instead of the $295, so that did go down. He did give us a $500,000 deductible option, which would save us $30,000, but neither of us felt that that was worth it.
You said a $500,000 deductible?
So for the QBE, we could lower that by $30,000 and pay approximately $240,000, I think it was, but are deductible. We would be responsible for the first $500,000 instead of the first $250,000. And to Daniel's and to myself, I don't think saving $30,000 is worth $250,000 add-on.
Right. And I know it's kind of slim pickings out there for this type of insurance, there's not a lot of companies.
For the jail is very, very slim.
Any questions?
It's outrageous.
I know, it is. Goes up every year.
I agree. I wish there was something I could do on that, but.
I know. Until we can get some laws in force and rein in the juries and the settlements that they pay out.
Absolutely.
We're going to be paying this. Commissioner Barella, any questions?
No questions, I toot the same horn with my insurance every day.
I get. All right, I make a motion for the approval of multi-line and law enforcement coverage for 2025, selecting NMC for multi-line and law enforcement sheriff coverage with QBE specialty for law enforcement detention.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, ma'am. Number 35, request approval of an amendment to FY25 Community Services Grant to Main Street Almagordo, and we discussed this earlier.
Yeah, based on our previous discussion, I just asked that we table it until the next meeting.
All right.
RB, I know you put a lot of time in with Nolan on that. I just, I still feel that we just need to help them over there.
I think that's a good idea. I think they, I think they're probably going to be happy about that. They just either didn't think of it or didn't think it would be considered, so.
I know $40,000 is not a lot of money, but a little bit might help on utility bills, stuff like that, so.
Okay, are we ready to move on to Commissioner Matherly?
All right. So, there's a lot going on down in Chaparral. Last, this month, we've had the meetings, the regular Coquett meetings. We've had the community meetings. I've met, Sheriff Black and I sat down with Representative-elect Silva, had a long conversation with her. I have been in contact with her probably about every two or three days, what she needs. She's getting ready to go to the legislation, trying to get a package together to help us on the emergency services project down there. I'm getting a good feeling from it, I hope she's really fired up about it. I hope she takes that energy up there with her and moves on. There's another company coming in, I'll kind of let you in a little bit. They're looking at building a facility next to our prisons down there, MTC. It's a child immigration facility. It's going to be a pretty good-sized facility. It's about a 3,000-bed deal, so there's going to be, it'll be pretty big. So Trent and I are trying to give the company a little bit of information we know or have on that going down there. So that's supposed to come in January 14th. So we'll see if it really happens, or be presenting it to the feds. Been working a lot, trying to get all of our resolutions. Representative Silva said that with their individual letter, she would like to have a resolution to, that will come strictly straight from the county. So again, we're kind of working on that. The other day, MTC came up and brought some presents to the Almagordo High School. They call it Tiger Care Center. So we met them over there, and Cheryl and I and the MTC group, we toured their facility, and they have a very nice facility. Nobody's ever been over there to see it. It's, they have a lot of items, help kits, laundry for homeless kids, you name it. They've got a pretty nice facility, which I didn't even realize they had over there. Also met, MTC and Cheryl and I went to the fairgrounds on the blanket donation deal. Went down there and took them, MTC, the inmates or the residents down there, they made 40 blankets, and so they brought them up, and we went and donated them. So I know that the, it was a big hit last year when we brought them a lot of blankets because it goes all to the senior citizens center. So, a lot of it, that's the only present they get. Poor Mrs. Lucero, she's down there, and she's wrapping every one of those blankets up. So it, she had her work cut out, so. One of the very interesting things, if you ever get a chance to go watch one of these burn deals that the fire department does, like I told Matt, it was a very well-controlled, organized burn. Everybody had their job, everybody knew what they were doing. It was a very good training facility. You just don't realize how fast a mobile home will burn down to the ground in just like a matter of 45 minutes, it's on the ground. So it, they have to learn to act quick, so it was very impressive. Commissioner Markworth and I met with, well, the first time I've met him, the new forester supervisor. It was a good meeting, I got a lot from him, he's very energetic. I hope it works out. I hope we get some good communication from him, that'll be the main thing. And I want to thank Sylvia and all the people that helped with the administration, Christmas lunch and stuff, and then the one with John and them that last night was very good, so. Other than that, I tell everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Commissioner Barella?
It's been busy.
No.
But I'm happy, I can't remember anything. I did attend the Yellow Jacket Breakfast and was able to see Bonnie one last time before she passed, which is devastating to our community, those who knew Bonnie. We recognized her for her 100th birthday a couple of months ago, and that she was at that Yellow Jacket Breakfast. And, yeah, she was quite a spiffy little lady that we're going to miss. I also attended the Tularosa Water District Annual Meeting. I went through a two-hour NACO training about subdivision development, which probably left me more confused than when I went into the meeting. I went to the Lincoln County Christmas Party. Yesterday was the administration and Christmas party that Sylvia put on, she did a very good job. And then, I have an opportunity for us, let me open up my email. We, all three of us, Commissioners, and RB and Pam, whoever wants to go, we've been invited to go to tour the spaceport facility during the time that the Air Force Thunderbirds are there for the winter training.
Woo-hoo! Am I in?
And we would like, if we would like to do this, we need to choose a date between January 8th and 14th. And then I would need to coordinate IDs and all of that ahead of time to make sure that we all pass our background check to enter the facility. So I was thinking, since it's January 8th through the 14th, I was thinking January 10th, since the administration building will be closed, and we can all go over there then.
I think that works.
The 10th.
Do what?
On the 10th of January, you have a 9 o'clock Chaparral, Dolores Wright Park.
Oh, yeah.
I am also unavailable on the 10th. I have several meetings and a doctor's appointment, but you don't have to wait on me.
Amy, it's just, would you need to pick a day through that time?
Yes, if you want to be there when the Thunderbirds are there, we can go anytime we want, but I figured we'd want to go when they were there.
How about the 8th? Can you do the 8th?
As do I, with my husband.
How about the 7th?
Yes, I think on the 9th.
The 9th is a commission meeting.
Oh, yes, I haven't put those in yet.
How about the 7th, that Tuesday?
Did she say the 8th?
Yeah, the 8th.
Oh, the 8th through the 14th.
Yes.
So, how about the?
13th is good.
I can do the 13th.
Okay, 13th, and then I'll coordinate within the time as well.
Madam Commissioner Matherly's assistant, does the 13 work with you? Yes, okay, we're good.
Okay. Great. I will coordinate this and see what kind of ID or applications they need and get that to both. Anybody else, RB, Pam?
Yes, count me in.
I'll go.
I've got a base pass, will that get me on?
It doesn't sound like it.
Okay.
Okay, I will, I'll keep you all posted.
For sure, that'll be fun.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Barella, I would congratulate you on your newly-elected position.
That's what I was going to do, yep.
You got your work cut out for you.
Well, I think if I can fight for a county, I can fight for the state, right?
That's right. That's right.
Thank you.
But congratulations, we are proud of you. I know that's a lot of, a lot of work to get elected and a lot of work to carry it out, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, since our last meeting, I attended the Main Street Accreditation Meeting, attended the Otero County Grazing Advisory Committee, attended the County Audit Exit Interview along with Juliana Pamela, attended the November Main Gate Meeting, attended Otero County Soil and Conservation Meeting and Luncheon, and that's where we met with Jason Freeman, the new forest supervisor. Attended a Zoom meeting with Margaret Byfield of American Stewards of Liberty, went to Albuquerque December 11th through the 13th for the New Mexico Cattle Growers Annual Conference, and also attended the New Mexico-Arizona Coalition of Counties Meeting while I was in Albuquerque. Attended the Christmas Party at Tularosa Basin Regional Dispatch last night, and that was really nice. And I hated to miss the county luncheon, but I was driving back from Lubbock that day. And I had on here to congratulate Commissioner Barella too for being voted as the Chair of the Republican Party of New Mexico. So that's, that's what I've been doing. Pamela?
Commissioners, it wasn't a very busy month, it was a nice break, but I did attend the Coquett meeting with Gerald. I, as well, was involved in the Audit Exit Conference. And the only really noteworthy thing that was enjoyable and informative was I spent a day with Tom and the Pinion Road Crew on the Mesa touring roads, recently improved roads and things that still need to be done. So we plan to do another one of those in spring.
You could get lost down there real easy in all them roads, huh?
Well, and I asked Lonnie, I said, "Have you ever gotten lost up here?", and he was like, "Nope."
All right, Commissioners, I've got some good news. We received a grant in the form of Planning Assistance to States program with the Corps of Engineers, and it's somewhere between $100,000, $150,000 with no cost share to do.
with no cost share to do approximately a 12- to 8-month comprehensive flood study of the county. And once we have that data from that study, it can help us get other funding to put in infrastructure to address flooding. And the money is there already and they anticipate starting in January.
That's awesome news.
And the House last week and then the Senate yesterday approved the revised version of the Water Resources Development Act for 2024. And from everything I can see, it looks like Otero County, the stuff from the House version that was passed earlier this year related to Otero County and flood analysis and study made it to the final version. And what that will consist of is a three-year study with $3 million. So I don't know what $3 million will buy us, but hopefully it's something good and will lead to, the focus that I'm pushing them towards on both of these studies is not only flood prevention, but also retaining that water and being able to put it to beneficial use for the county and the communities within the county. Because if we just let it go, it goes out towards white sands and becomes unusable or at least not usable without a lot of additional money and investment. So I'm pretty optimistic about this. We'll see where it goes. I'll keep you posted. Of course, the president still has to sign it, but I don't, nothing has indicated that it won't be signed based on that. I've had some conversations with some folks in the oil and gas industry. I think I've mentioned before that with the new administration coming in, I see that as an opportunity to restart those conversations for Otero County and our best chance to be able to get something going related to that. If that, we don't have many options as a county otherwise in terms of revenue. And that could be horse-altering if we could get that type of revenue. But what I've learned is even if permitting is increased and there's support at the federal level for that, there remain challenges here. We do have oil in the county and we do have natural gas and lots of it probably. But there's no infrastructure, so that is a prohibitive, cost prohibitive factor that leans against it. And in addition to that, the state, at the state level, the regulatory outlook and what's in place is also cost prohibitive to that coming in here, unfortunately. And it doesn't look like it's going to change anytime soon. So unfortunately, shooting ourselves in the foot at the state level. That's all I've got for this month.
Been busy.
RB, one question with you real quick. They, I read where the governor put out her budget for next year that should be coming. And a lot of that was, if I'm not mistaken, it was going to be on wildland fires and flooding throughout the state. So I don't know if we can get any help on that too. Commissioner Borella, you probably up more on that than, have you heard anything else on that?
I've been looking at her budget. I've been more concerned that it's increased to $10.9 billion. That's what I've been focusing on more than just the issues. So no, that's all I know.
So I didn't know if there was something, an approach we could maybe try to apply for a little of that for also.
Yeah, I think we absolutely should and can and maybe we'll have some data from at least the one that's starting in January that can support any of those applications. There's no shortage of things that can be done, I think.
Okay, is that all, RB?
Yeah, I think so.
All right. All right, I make a motion to hold an executive session under NMSA 1978-10-15-1 to discuss purchase or sale of real property.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye. Be a little caller some more.
I'm going to call a little.
Okay.
Commissioner Markworth?
Here.
Commissioner Matherly?
Here.
Commissioner Borella?
Here.